Good evening. Thank you for coming in tune here to watch our city council meeting this week. I hope to bring to you some interesting things, a presentation on a tiny village that somebody wants to prosper and make happen. We also talked about road closures for Halloween in the Highlands Village area, so be sure to listen to that. Also, there will be a fire board debate, or forum actually, not really debate, it's a forum because of there's open seats on the fire board. So that will be happening at 6:30 PM.
6:00 PM.
Oh, 6 o'clock PM, I've been corrected. 6 o'clock PM here in City Hall on the 29th of October. So please get involved and know who you're going to be voting for to protect our district with the fire board. And with that, thank you. Good evening. We will now open our regular meeting of the Clear Lake City Council and Redevelopment Accessor Agency, Clear Lake City Hall Council Chambers, 14050 Olympic Drive, Clear Lake, California, 95422, at 6:04 PM. May I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Sabatier.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdock.
Aye.
Councilmember Overton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fortino Dixon.
Present.
Mayor Lustelow.
Here.
And Councilmember Purdock, will you lead us in front, please?
Come on. All right, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I believe this evening we have Pastor Bravinson here to give us our invocation. Thank you. Would you please stand?
Let's pray. Our holy God, we thank you for your goodness, your mercy, and your grace. In recent months, we have seen your hand of protection upon our community by holding back the fires. We have also seen your blessing upon those touched by the valley fire through the generosity and hard work of many. We ask your continued presence as we work together to rebuild, make us stronger than ever because of we join hand in hand with your spirit. We thank you for this opportunity to come before you tonight. We thank you for these whom you have placed in leadership of our town and for their willingness to serve. We ask that you bless our city council as they meet this evening. Guide them in your spirit. Give them wisdom as they discuss the issues as well as insight to make decisions that benefit our whole community. Guide and direct this meeting. Bring your peace, your understanding, and your love to all those here, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Moving on to adoption of the agenda, are there any modifications to be made?
There are no modifications, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Make a motion to accept the agenda submitted.
Aye.
A roll call, both, please.
Councilmember Sabatier.
Aye.
Councilmember Overton.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdock.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fortino Dixon.
Aye.
Mayor Lustelow.
Aye. Now I'll turn this over to our city attorney for actions or if any, in closed session.
Well, Madam Mayor, there we go, action, taking it in closed session.
Thank you. Now I will turn this over to Councilmember Purdock for a presentation of a proclamation declaring October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming to our meeting tonight. Thank you, Mayor, for selecting me to read the proclamation. Is there anyone here who would like to stand with me in recognition of October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month? I'd love to have you come up here and join me. Thank you very much. Come on up, Barbara. I need somebody to help hold my hand because I get nervous reading this stuff. Please. I'm very excited. This means a lot to me. I signed up months and months and months ago to begin walking in preparation for the Susan G. Coleman Three Days 60 Mile Walk to raise money for breast cancer awareness and advance the cure. And I'll be doing that next month in San Diego. So, and sadly, I'm part of a team of just shy of 50 people. And I just received an email day before yesterday that two of our team members were just diagnosed with stage four breast cancer. So I don't know if, I'm hoping that they are there with us, supporting us, I don't know if they're going to be able to make the walk. So if you will, please keep these people in mind. Wear your pink ribbons, show support because we do need to find a cure, probably not for, you know, our generation, but for our children and grandchildren. So thank you. So, the City of Clear Lake proclamation, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October 2015. Whereas while considerable progress has been made in the fight against breast cancer, it remains the most commonly diagnosed cancer and the second leading cause of death among women in the United States. And whereas each year is estimated that more than 220,000 women in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer, and more than 40,000 will die as a result of the disease. And whereas October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, an annual campaign to increase awareness about the disease, and whereas during this month, we reaffirm our commitment to support breast cancer research and to educate all citizens about its risk factors, detection, and treatment. And whereas we will display pink ribbons and wear pink clothing and raise awareness, we also support the courageously fighting cancer, breast cancer, and honor those who lost to the disease. And whereas this October, we recognize breast cancer survivors, those battling the disease, our families and friends who are a tireless source of love and encouragement, and applaud the efforts of our medical professionals and researchers working hard for a cure for this deadly disease. And whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an opportunity to unite all citizens in our community to prevent breast cancer deaths through increased education and regular screening. Now, therefore, the city council, the city of Clear Lake, does hereby proclaim October 15th as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Clear Lake, dated this 22nd day of October 2015, signed by Mayor Denise Lustelow. Thank you very much. You have a second presentation this evening, presented by Cornerstone Villages on Tiny
Home Villages for Unhoused People. Come on up to the podium.
Thank you very much for having me. It's an honor to be speaking with you today. My name is Derek Joel Fiedler, and I'm representing Cornerstone Villages. And our organization is here because we have very specific needs that I'll address right here in the introduction. We are seeking universal cooperation, land to build tiny home villages, and to work in congruence with the codes and zoning. In Lake County, we do not just have a homelessness problem, and clearly, we do not just have a homelessness problem. What we have is a housing crisis. And so what I'd like to share with you is what our organization is going to do and the solutions that we are presenting. We'd like to build tiny home villages that will answer the immediate needs in emergency shelters, overnight, warming centers, transitional housing, long-term affordable housing, rehab center, refuge for victims of abuse, and many more. I'll explain who we are, what, where, when, why, and how. We are Cornerstone Villages. We're a nonprofit grassroots organization dedicated to transforming lives and community through organized tiny home villages. What we are is a clearinghouse in our partnership with private and public organizations, and free labor to help organize the rebuild effort here in Lake County. We're going to be meeting the housing needs immediately, right now, also in the midterm and as well as the long term. Very simply, we have hearts that want to help provide our brothers and sisters in our community with a safe place to be. This is how we're going to do it. Considering the low cost of a full-size village of 30 units, which is $100,000, and it's not a made-up number, this is the exact number that Opportunity Village in Eugene spent in their first year to build their first 30-unit transitional village. Considering this amount, we will be able to raise the money in a very short amount of time through private donations and local fundraising. Grants and other financial assistance is welcomed, but not necessarily needed. We're not dependent on that type of aid. We believe Lake County can fund them, that it can build them, and it can be really proud of them. The villages are built by volunteer labor force, ran by a volunteer administration staff, and overseen by a board of directors, and operated by the residents and volunteer staff. 100% of all donations will go directly to purchasing materials. In order to build one tiny home, the cost is an average of about $1,000. So $1,000 is all it takes to get people a safe and clean place to be. We also just recently created Crowdrise.com site where people can now donate online. This will be sustained through micro-businesses by the sale of tiny homes in the community, and these proceeds are directly reinvested into the organization in order to build more tiny homes. Other forms of micro-businesses include selling produce, crafts, jewelry, bike store, and NAR stores. So I'll give you a timeline of our organization. In January, we created a Facebook page that generated a lot of interest very, very quickly in the community. In April, I myself went up to Opportunity Village in Oregon, Eugene, Oregon, and I was able to meet the architect pictured, and also the leader and visionary, also pictured, named Andrew Haven, the author of Tent City Urbanism, who literally wrote the book on this. And I was able to make incredible connections that we still have today, and also get an in-depth feel of how the village operates, functions, and the atmosphere to which it resides. And I came back absolutely inspired, and this really fueled the movement here. And in July, we had our first prototype in the Clear Lake Parade, took second place. That same unit, we refurbished an old boat trailer, and married that same prototype onto that, and entered it into the Lake County Fair. So right now, we are in the process of finishing three A-frame homes, and based on the track that we're on now, we'll be able to build 30 units before Christmas. I also want to note that we're working in tandem with Pacific Union College, who's had an invested interest in helping the people in their housing and other needs. They've been coming here for 40 years, and now they see a really good thing in Cornerstone Villages, and they also would like to build about 20 units before Christmas to drive over here to wherever the village may be. Also, right now, we're building these units and holding build parties every single Saturday from 9:00 AM to about 5:00 PM. Right now, it's located in Lakeport. We'd really like to see a manufacturing site right here. Also, right now, we're in the process of being physically sponsored with North Coast Opportunities, and strengthening our community network with other private entities and organizations. Here's a short list of the ones that we've worked with. So we're back to why we are here. It is our goal to have universal cooperation. This is a collaborative effort, and we need congruence of our governing leaders, and we seek that. We also seek community development, as you can see here. We're not just building homes, we're building relationships. We're building something that we are proud of, and coming together, where neighbors can love neighbors, we can serve one another. So we're not just building buildings, but we're actually rebuilding lives, bringing people to a whole other place. So, need number two, is that we need land to build these tiny home villages on. And this is our criteria, it's very simple. It's two to five acres, fenced or fencedable, and no more than a half mile away from public transportation, and it needs utility hookups, sewer, electricity, and so forth. We can also build medium-sized villages, about 12 units, that are a half to two acres in size. Thirdly, and lastly, we are seeking to operate under the grace of the city of Clear Lake. We do not want to build these things and, you know, as someone would say, like stick it to you, or like operate outside of the codes and zoning that the city of Clear Lake either has or is about to make. We would like to help you guys in creating or even modifying these codes in order to safely zone tiny homes, and also tiny home villages. That is my presentation. I must leave the remaining time open for questions.
So with this time, I, we really can't get into too much dialogue. We can accept your presentation. Thank you graciously for bringing this work to us, so now we will decide if it's something in the future we need to address. But we can't, we can't go back and forth right now.
Okay. How much time remaining do I have? You guys allow me 15 minutes? All right.
I do have a question. I believe that there are certain ground rules or rules that are being followed at the Opportunity Village. Can you discuss that at Greater Lake, as far as what the environment within a tiny village is like? How long do they stay? What is the, is this transitional? Is it permanent? Because there seemed to be a bit of both that was discussed here, there was long-term, and then there was short-term. Wondering if you can get into more details on that.
Absolutely. So, right now, that organization has two projects, Opportunity Village, which is transitional housing, and there's also Emerald Village, and both those models are fantastic. Emerald Village is permanent, low-income, or affordable housing. So people pay rent, it's about $200 or $300. They get their own tiny home that has standalone utilities, as well as common areas that they share. An interesting thing there is that the rent that they pay actually invests into the equity of the organization. So when they move out, they actually cash back in, or cash out that equity that they put in. So if they go to buy a house or put a down payment on an apartment, they actually have thousands of dollars already to go that they invested. So that model is really exciting, especially now considering that a lot of the rental units, that price is really going up because of the apartments and the other houses that burnt down in the fire. We've noticed a spike in the rental prices because people realize that they can. To answer your other question as far as transitional villages, they do not have a set maximum time. The way they say it is it takes longer for other people to transition, and so the agreements that they have in place in their village manual, that everybody signs and agrees upon in order to be a villager, they adhere to these, and part of that is to have a proactive and measurable transition. So it would be finding a job, going to school, being a place. And so if people are taking advantage of the system, the vetting committee will be able to see a measure of success or a measure of taking advantage of it, not trying to transition, and they will be voted out. Opportunity Village has had, as of last week, 23 people successfully transitioned out and had find housing, either apartments or with other friends and family. And they've also had about a dozen people that were voted out. So what that really shows you is that the system and the organization of the village really works. So someone being disruptive, or drinking too much, or being abusive, or abusing the system, they've successfully been voted out because essentially they're taking a spot, a very precious spot, for someone that may actually want to transition, to rebuild their life.
And I do have one more question also. Can you describe the locations in Eugene where these small villages are located? Are they located in the major city area, are they located on the outskirts? Just to get a description of where this is placed for them at least.
Right, so the lot for Opportunity Village was a really rundown RV trailer park that they cleared out, cleaned up, and the city of Eugene leases that lot to them for a dollar a year. It was on a conditional use permit, probation time for one year, and then they voted unanimously, nine to zero, to make it a permanent fixture for Opportunity Village to be there. So, that lot is on the edge of a very trendy part of town. I mean, I walked to a cafe to do some internet work, and also had lunch with Andy Haven, the pictured author and visionary of that village. And so it's not out of town at all. The main bike route in that neighborhood directly goes to the river and railroad bike trails, so transportation-wise, it's less than a quarter mile from the public transportation stop. It has the bike highway right around the corner, and it's in walking distance to a very nice part of town. And the zoning, I believe they went with a transitional campground since it was once an RV park.
Again, I guess I used the wrong words, we just can't elaborate, is what I meant.
Can't discuss amongst ourselves. Oh, I understand. Is there any concerns or questions?
All right. So, as we can see, these are very small tiny houses. Square footage-wise are 10 by 10s, 10 by 12s. What are the square footage on these?
Right, so for the transitional village, the square footage is 60 feet to 100. And that was based on the city of Eugene, their zoning, their process of what they came to an agreement with. The thought behind these square footages is 60 square feet is about the size of a large dome tent, which hundreds of people are going to be sleeping in this winter due to evacuation or displacement, or choice. And this unit being on a 2x6 foundation with, you know, three-fourths plywood and insulated walls is a whole lot better than sleeping in basically a thin paper towel.
My second thought is, could you describe, because none of these have restrooms, and you haven't told us about the common area, you've mentioned common area, but can you tell us a little bit about what the common area looks like in this other village that you've been to?
Right, so again, using Opportunity Village Eugene as an example, their common area is a very large yurt. While I was there, they had about 60 to 70 people inside of it. It's heated, it has internet, it has several computers for resumes and homework and finding jobs. Also has a library and a couch area, and a couple large tables. So it's heated, it's very comfortable. The bedroom units have no utilities, electricity, or anything. And there's a lot of reasons for that. The main one's being safety. You know, one of them, you have people running, you know, really old electric heaters, for example. And the other one is that they really don't need those utility hookups. I slept in three different units, and it was 28 degrees outside, it had snowed when I drove there. And that night, I slept for nine hours, and I was very comfortable. I didn't miss a heater for one moment.
And the showers are, shower facilities and bathroom facilities are located, maybe they have on the property?
So they have two shower, or one shower, two bathrooms, laundry, and, let's see, an indoor-outdoor kitchen, several refrigerators and cooktops, tool shed, donation tent. So those are the common microstructures that are centralized and shared. And with 42 people being in the village, it was pretty simple for me, even being a guest, like I just signed my name up for a shower, and an hour later, I took a really nice, really warm shower. I did laundry there, and I went to the bathroom, and I never waited in line, not once. I was, four nights that I was there.
It says on the flyer here that there's intention to provide vocational training, peer counseling, life counseling, mentoring. How is the staffing being addressed for those services?
So, again, it's going to be volunteer-based, and we have several volunteer life coaches that have expressed interest, and a lot of, a lot of what we're trying to do is totally based on relationships. That's how we started, it was just an outreach, trying to help people, let them do this. So we're trying to stay true to that. So established organizations like Celebrate Recovery, or AA, or Big Brother, Big Sister type of programs, we want to be a partner with them. And also, NCO has training for life coaching and abuse and care counseling that several of our members have actually just recently completed. If there's any other concerns, I mean, this would be a great time, I'd love to field your questions.
Anything else for the council? Thank you.
Thank you everyone.
Okay, moving on to public comment. This is where the wording is we cannot answer your questions. So everyone has three minutes of their podium to talk about anything that's within our jurisdiction, but again, we cannot answer any questions to you at this time. It will be timed by our city clerk, and the time clock is over in the corner there displayed. Our first speaker is Carol Fredericks, and she'd like to talk about homeless solutions.
Hi, how you doing? I'm Carol Fredericks. I'm glad to be here. I've been a resident of Lake County for 17 years. As of recent, I've become homeless myself. I'm living in a tent behind Foods, et cetera. I've been an active part of the homeless community before I ever became homeless. Whenever I've had a house, I've allowed homeless people to come shower, feed, do laundry. And we're really lacking in this area, not just housing. And I know one of the biggest complaints by the community about homelessness is trash and human waste. And I believe that, given the recent added funding to Lake County, that it would be feasible not only for everyone in the community, but for the environment itself to pitch in, because I know the homeless people that are out there, they had porta potties to their disposal to use, or a dumpster to put their garbage, they would utilize those. And this is an opportunity that's given to us. We have to fight with the store owner to throw away our garbage, you know, when we're coming off the hill to go to Foods, or, you know, or coming out of the orchard to go to Safeway. And homelessness has always been treated like a criminal drug addict problem, and that is not the situation. There's hundreds of reasons why the people that are out there that are homeless are homeless. And it's very difficult to be shunned at and looked at like a good-for-nothing drug addict by people in my community. It hurts me, I'm tired of being like, oh, and not that, yes, there are some, but there are some people that sit in those chairs that are drug addicts too, that it just doesn't show on the outside. And I'm just being real, you know, regardless of whether it's the pharmacy, school, or street drugs, it's all an addiction. It doesn't even have to be a chemical thing, you know, gambling, you know, those kinds of things. Those are addictions, they're diseases. They're not just a social choice, you know? These are mechanisms that we've, and I speak for myself, because yes, I am a drug addict, and I do use drugs, but yes, I'm also a person who has self-control and self-restraint, and I don't let those addictions affect the people and self-restraint, and I don't let those addictions affect the people around me in a negative way. I'm not out there begging. I'm not stealing. I'm not buying. I'm not cheating. And yes, I would love a solution for myself, but only Jesus has that, you know? Because I've been here, man. It doesn't work. You know, it doesn't work for everyone. And that's all we got.
Our next speaker this evening is Phil Wilson. Dogs Not Properly Confined. Come on up.
I'd like to say good evening to the council and everyone here. I've been up here a few times, but lived in this community for more than probably twenty-five years now. In the last probably two years, I've been attacked on my street. And I've been on the tour years twice. One today by two pit bull mixers, and once by two other dogs that were mixed pit bulls and whatnot. And I'm wondering, what is it going to take, since at the end of my street, we have a school pickup? These dogs are vicious for whatever reason. I don't know. I'm not a psychologist or a psychologist or whatever. But one day, they're going to get out and go and hurt some kids, or do worse, kill them all. And we're all sitting here going like, wow, there is no problem. I can't even walk down my street now. I've been on my street twelve years. Now I have to change my course, because I got almost bitten and chewed up today. And everybody just looks at it, wow, what are you talking about? They're all over the place, these dogs. What are you going to do? What does anybody going to do? We have animal control here, which is really good, okay? You need to do something to protect the kid. My kids are grown, thank goodness. But I'm just saying in general, hey, you see them down there at the corner? There's no way a seven or eight-year-old, nine or ten-year-old child is going to fight off a pit bull. And all we're doing is just lollygagging, I call it, and not addressing this issue. It is a problem. And nobody seems to care. The owners of these dogs train them all pretty much to be mean. I'm not saying all of them, but most of the pit bulls, when you see them, you're looking for a place to go to get out of the way. I'm a grown-up. I barely got them off me today. At the kick, it start yelling, "Come get your dogs." But they gotta, you gotta do something. We'll figure it out. That's all I'm gonna say.
Yes, I would like to see if maybe you could get with our staff during the day and discuss your issues a little bit more on your street, so we can get some help to you possibly.
Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Wilson, did you hear me?
Would you possibly give your address to our staff people?
Okay, then thank you. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to speak at public comment? Come on up to the podium.
Merle, I'm glad to see you guys finally broke down without a mic. But I also find it quite interesting that drug addicts and gambling addicts are running our city. I suggest you guys get into recovery and stop, and start getting onto that habit. It's not a good idea. Now, 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 those of you know that I got a ticket for obstructing a handicap parking spot. Now, I would like to know when, why the police department does not take and hand out those nifty little tickets for people that park in handicap parking spots, or block them with their truck doors, or the police officers that obstruct handicap parking spots so they can get a coffee, why they're allowed to do it? You know, if I get one, everybody else is entitled to one too. Spread the joy around, folks. And we know who I'm talking about, aren't we? Don't wait, Denise.
I'm stupid.
How about Enterprise Towing? That's right. Don't answer it. But, yeah. And that's not the only infraction that they do in this town. They're probably one of the worst bad neighbors in this town in regards to the things that they do that are actually breaking the law. And I would suggest that Enterprise Towing kind of informed their drivers about the laws, especially when Pete had the nerve to condemn me in June about me complaining about getting a ticket for obstruction. Kind of hypocritical, Denise?
Anyone else this evening would like to speak at public comment?
I feel a bit under stress, but I work in tandem with Tiny Home Diligence. I first want to start by saying thank you guys for all your diligence and hard work. I know sometimes these meetings can seem like we're truly here to work with the guys. Also, in that realm, I'm a resident of COP. I'm looking to tie in private organizations and stuff on the rebuilding process, and some of the questions that I would have you guys consider, if we can get some answers. I know not right now, but we're looking at making some proposals for like temporary housing. My houses are being rebuilt. We're also looking at how the tiny village could move into helping in that regard. I know FEMA's going to do a lot on their end. And then also, just that we already got people on site that are ready to build for people that were like uninsured. So some of my questions are, I don't really know how to approach the zoning, and I know Joyce, I've heard your name. I don't know how to approach that. I'm a huge advocate for rebuilding COP as a community resident, also a huge advocate for approaching this county. I love Lake County. I love what you guys are doing. I really look forward to hopefully, especially now, rebuilding something great. So if you guys have anything, if you guys shoot that to Derek or something along those lines. But I do want to thank you guys for your hard work. I know you guys are daily going at this thing, and you guys have a lot of considerations.
It's kind of intimidating up here. You guys doing all right? My name's Aaron York. I'm also with Cornerstone Villages. But prior to Cornerstone Villages, I've been with, in Lake County for about fourteen years, in Northern California for about twenty-five. Was raised in Chico, so the similar dynamics of this area are pretty prevalent, whether you move two hours east or west. It's all, kind of has the same flavor. I've run a couple different multimillion-dollar business operations, and one of the things that I wanted to share is that Cornerstone Villages has a broad array of resources, not only in advocacy and the traditional sense of grassroots, but there's also a lot of professional people that are desirous to get behind this movement and help. And I just wanted to echo those sentiments that have already been put forth, that, you know, I think all of us understand that we're kind of wrestling with an anaconda here. I don't think anything like this has happened in the county specifically, obviously, the Valley Fire Ring III in the state of California for the most devastating fires that have taken place. And my understanding is that one of the things Cornerstone Villages is interested in doing is trying to bridge those gaps between public and private. I represent the faith community as well, and I know there's a lot of voices, and we want to come to the table and work together. Obviously, nobody's going to win if we're undercutting and having personal agendas, et cetera. So I just wanted to put that forward, that we're working with a lot of different groups, a lot of people of like mind. And I know that you guys sitting in these seats have that same mindset, or you wouldn't be doing what you're doing. And I just wanted to open that up and just say that we want to hear what you guys have to say. We want to honor whatever codes you guys put in place, whatever legal health, insurance concerns that there might be. We're just looking to try to close these gaps as quickly as possible. I'm sure as you guys are brainstorming and coming up with strategies and proposals to execute. And basically, we have people, networks of people, hundreds of people, thousands of dollars. I was recently told that only a fraction of the five million that was released for the rebuild was actually, a very small percentage of that was actually released to Lake County. So my concern is that we're going to be underfunded. You guys are probably already overworked, underpaid, and understaffed, if you're like any other organization in California. And as a businessperson, I get that. And so we bring a ton of free resources of professional, volunteer, and a myriad of different skill sets. And so I know that it can kind of seem single-faceted, like we're just a grassroots organization. But we have teams of people. We have architects. We have builders. We have people with expertise in every segment of this project. And so what we're really just asking for is if we can just try to fast-track a plan, us going to get these people out of the cold into the homes that they need, in the most cost-effective, safe, possible means. So, thank you for your time.
Not seeing anyone else. That will close public comment. And move on to the consent agenda. Is there any item the council would like to call? On the consent agenda, is there any item the public would like to call? Okay, seeing none. May I get a motion?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Slatie?
Aye.
Councilmember Firdock?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cortino Dixon?
Aye.
Moving on to item number eleven. Consideration of a request to conduct traffic mitigation measures at the village's operation area, Island Harbor, Lakeview Drive, and Ridgewood Drive on October 31st, 2015, from 5:00 p.m. to 13:00 p.m. in order to facilitate safe trick-or-treating festivities.
Thank you, Mayor. This is actually an event that's been going on for years and years, as far as we can tell, in conversations with you, at least until the eighties. What it basically is, is there's an area of, clearly known as the villages, which encompasses Harbor Drive, Lakeview Drive, Ridgewood Drive, and some surrounding areas. Apparently, kids come from all over to trick-or-treat within that area. What has been going on for, again, for many years, is the VIPs, the volunteers and police, are out there blocking, essentially, they're out there doing traffic mitigation to keep vehicles from going through there and interacting harmfully with the children that are walking around. This apparently has never come to the council for formal approval. I just wanted to bring this forward, just so there is formal council approval.
I will open this item up for public comment, item number eleven. Anyone wish to speak on item number eleven?
Yes.
I don't bother children. I have a bunch myself. My only concern in the village for the trick-or-treaters is, I believe last year, the year before, I was trying to get home, and they didn't want to let me go to my home. And I said, I live right around the corner there. So you need to let me, you need to move the barricade so I can get to my home. So we need to make sure it's clear that people who live in the area can get to their homes if we happen to be out when the children come along. And I'm very careful to look for children. Like I said, I have a bunch of them and a bunch of grandchildren. So we just need to make that clear. I have no problem with them coming to trick-or-treat. Thank you.
It does say here that drivers will be asked to show identification and proof of residency to ensure that only necessary traffic is there. So bring your ID.
And that's what I was going to say. I was working in that corner downstairs, and we ask for ID. And if they could produce ID, they could go. And if they didn't produce ID, they couldn't go. And we had some unhappy people, but we don't want the kids to get run over either. So, bring your ID, and don't hesitate to show it. If one of the officers or one of the volunteers asks for it, I won't be there this sharp, staying home, so I can trick, I can have the trick-or-treaters at my house.
Good evening. What I understand, Lakeport is not having festivals, is that correct, for Halloween, for the safety? I read that.
I read that.
So do you think they're going to be coming here also, kids? I mean, if I was there, I'd come here.
Hard to tell.
Pardon me?
Hard to tell.
Yes, I guess we'll find out. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else, I'll bring this back to the panel.
We did have some discussion when we were talking about the very first trick-or-treat, about trying to create a large-scale, big draw event that would sort of mitigate or alleviate some of that traffic in the village and a lot of that congestion. So trick-or-treat is still happening, I'm happy to say, and will be at the youth center on Halloween night. Now, I don't think that was, what, two years ago?
You're kind of getting away from the subject. Start over twice.
Sorry. We were talking about this and we haven't come forward before. So we did actually talk about this before, but not in...
I don't think there's ever been a traffic. I don't think that, I never knew we needed one.
I think this is great and needs to continue. So, are you looking for a motion? Do we need to approve?
Yep.
Thank you.
This hasn't been...
I thought you'd speak first tonight, so that was enough.
I just want to thank the folks that live in the village in the harbor. They've done a fantastic job over a number of years. I can't even go back, flip my whole life, can't go back far enough to think when there was a big trick-or-treating, once it was built. And just for the folks that may be converging upon the village and Islands Harbor, they spent hundreds of dollars per household to make sure that there is enough candy, and just hope that everyone will be respectful of the properties, respectful of those folks trying to offer security and safety down in the village on Halloween night, and everybody is safe, has a flashlight, and everybody gets home safe. Thank you.
Very good. So would that mean a good motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the traffic mitigation measures in the village area.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Slatie?
Aye.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Firdock?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cortino Dixon?
Aye.
Mayor Gustafen?
Aye.
So, who are the city managers for his report?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to introduce Bill Clemmons, who is going to be our new interim city engineer. We're looking forward to having him coming on board. Welcome.
Welcome, Mayor.
Also, just want to report that we've had a number of ad hoc meetings over the last few weeks. We've had our marijuana ad hoc committee. We've had our road revenue ad hoc committee. We've had a universal garbage ad hoc committee. Some of those have had multiple meetings. Some of those have had multiple meetings. So we are moving forward on those and hoping to be coming to the council very shortly with some recommendations. As you all are know, we had our town hall meeting last week as well. We had excellent turnout, so I want to thank the community for coming out for that. Employees have been issued ID cards. So more than just a few D now have employee ID cards. So if there is interaction out in the public, they can ask for their ID cards. Also, just want to make everyone aware that we did, we were successful in getting a $5,000 Cal recycle grant that we can use for recycling-related purchases. An example of that type of purchase are the trash canisters out in front of City Hall. We purchased that with our last grant. We also received some $25,000 to do a telephone survey with regards to whether their transportation cell tax would be viable in this community. That was through the Area Planning Commission. And that concludes my report.
Well, I was at the town hall meeting. I thought I really liked the way that town hall meeting went and how it was set up. Much better than some of the other ones that we've had with the controversial items. So thanks for doing that very well. I appreciate it. I also met and talked with the gentleman on Tiny House Village and trying to get some information on that and given some directions of maybe some other things, places that, you know, he can also look. Trying to help him out to see how that's going to work for our community. So I do look forward to getting more information on that. We've been working on the community garden. So if there's anybody out there that would like to participate, please contact me because now that the evacuation center is gone, and we're back to a senior center, we can start working on what we need to do to get that place open for the community to be able to plant their garden. We still have time for the winter garden. If anybody wants to parade the help, we can get that open to the community. Because that's what it's supposed to be, and so that's what we're trying to do, is get that open to them. And that's not it. Thank you.
Councilmember Sabatier?
Yeah, on October 14th, I went to a couple meetings to catch up on all the meetings that were canceled because of the valley fire. Went to the Lake Transit Authority and APC meeting to find out all the work that the transit did to help with the evacuations during the fire. That was actually commendable. I really enjoyed hearing all their reports. Got to see all the updates on the projects from the APC as well. And then had an interesting conversation during the LAPCO meeting about the sphere of influence for Lakeport. On the 15th, I was here also for the town hall meeting, which I also thoroughly enjoyed. Especially the gathering of people in this chamber, filling up the chamber is always a pleasure. So to see that many people participate in what we're doing is always a good sign. And then this last Wednesday, came here and had what I thought was a very constructive and progressive conversation on the marijuana ad hoc committee. And that is my reporting.
Councilmember Firdock?
Thank you, ma'am. Again, I was part of the APC, Lake APC meeting. Grateful to those who joined us and will fund us for that survey. Hope that everybody out there will, when you get that call, participate in the survey. We really want to get the community's input on how we're going to do this, how we're going to improve our infrastructure. And it's not a secret, we don't have a lot of money. So we need to come up with ways that we can fund these things. And that was a really big gesture. And we need to spend that money wisely. So I was grateful for that. As Councilmember Sabatier, bless you. Was that Olga? Bless you, Olga. We had also the road ad hoc, as our manager mentioned. Had some really good conversation and discussion with that. And again, dovetailing it to the survey, hopefully we can have some real positive changes happening in our near future. Really good consensus and coming together in the marijuana. That was very encouraging, marijuana ad hoc. So I'm looking forward to that. Just a lot of really good things happening in the city. But one of the most, I think, encouraging is our universal garbage discussions. And we've got some real problems out there. And I see some folks from CC for C here, thank you for all your work. I'll tell you, it would be a lot worse without your effort. And so thank you very much, want to publicly recognize you guys. One neighborhood, one block at a time, will make a difference. And it brings up our property values and the neighbor's notice. So again, thank you for that. And with that, I'll turn it over to you.
I'll turn it over to Vice Mayor Cortino Dixon.
All right. I also attended the Lake Transit Authority and APC meetings and appreciate the support of the rest of those council members with the supporting, the...
Survey.
Thank you. Come back on board for the voter survey. So we take that very seriously and we plan to use the information that we get to come up with the best solution. I also attended two ad hoc committees this week. And I heard about two others that are going on. So I just wanted to take this opportunity right now because we're trying something new with the ad hoc committees by getting front-loading with community input. And there are a lot of community members spread out amongst these four ad hocs that are going on right now. And I'd really like to extend a big heartfelt thank you to all those community members who are using their time to come in and really hash this out with us. So I appreciate that. Have I done anything else? Oh, I did attend the town hall meeting. Who knows to you guys?
Yep.
Next time, I'm talking first so I can thank everybody. I'm just kidding. I enjoy listening. I enjoy listening to what everybody has done and all the great things that we're doing as a team, as a council, and as staff, and as a community. Like Gina said, there are tons of people getting involved. And that's why I got involved, was to make sure to get the word out there for everyone to come and get involved to help me get a better place. I attended the PEG meeting in Lakeport on the 14th. That was a productive but short meeting, so that's about it. I did attend the judge's breakfast on the 15th where our chief presented on that. Sorry, they're not the chief, I'm looking over. Anyway, it was a good presentation that your chief made on that morning. At the town hall that evening. And continued meetings with the city manager weekly. So if you have anything, bring it to me and I will bring it forward to him at my meeting. And with that, I will end my meeting for the team.
Do you have an announcement?
Announcement?
It's not a report, it's just an announcement.
Oh, okay.
I'd like everyone that's interested at all in the fire election that's upcoming, we're hosting a candidate forum on the 29th. That's one week from tonight, 6:00 p.m. in this room. We have, all four candidates have responded affirmatively. They will be present. We are anticipating what the questions offered and opening and closing statements. It should last about an hour and a half. And would love to see this room full and people along the walls. It's a very important election. Our fire department does a lot for us and they need our support. So please come down, 29th, Thursday, 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Okay, and also, the trunk-or-treat is going on this year on Saturday, the 31st. So we're starting with the parade at our wonderful park where the new chamber building is going to be. Our visitor center is going to be at the Highlands Park there. And we'll be going to, towards the youth center. We're going to end at the youth center with our trunks at the park and our activities inside. There'll be free food, games, you know, music. So everybody come and enjoy it. Our, we have the third year, right? Three years down, yeah, third year. The parade starts at 4:00 and food starts at 5:00. So come down and enjoy, take some of the stress off the village. That's what we're trying to do, make everything. Initially, we're going to have a pumpkin patch too. So I think they're going to do that, start at 11:00 at the senior, at the youth center. So come down, enjoy, watch for the flyers around town, okay? We're getting a little light start, but we're getting there.
Thank you. Now we are meeting over.